All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the council work session for the town of Leydenburg for today, Monday, April 11. Thank you so much for joining, whether you're watching us live or coming back to watch the rebroadcast. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And so may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Rowat. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any discussion? Mr. McGory, did you need to add anything here on the staff side or no? Just for the council?
Not for the work session.
You mean the council meeting? We're in the work session, sorry.
Yeah, I don't need to add anything to the work session.
Okay, just checking. Okay, great. So I'll now call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the March 14th and 2022 work session minutes. In addition to that are the November 8th, 2021 work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rowat. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you. And now is there a motion to approve the November 8th, 2021 work session minutes?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Rowat. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any discussions, corrections, or edits? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Tonight, we don't have any special appearances for a presentation, so we'll move right over into old business, with the first item being the State of Maryland funding updates for our municipal center, as well as our historical Bostwick House. So at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. McGory.
Thank you very much. And I have Councilmember McBride connected by phone. She's trying to get connected through the internet, but she can at least hear me. And the purpose of this agenda item is simply to let you all know that we were very successful, and I appreciate the help of the council working together and with the encouragement and support of the staff, providing technical information to help navigate these legislative processes that the funding for both the municipal center and the Bostwick House was included in the budget. It migrated through the Senate side first. They switch every year who gets first crack at it, and went through the committee, got out of committee, was approved by the Senate, then transferred to the House, went to the Appropriations Committee in the House. Both those items remained in the House budget, emerged from the House, went back to the Senate for reconciliation, and emerged from the Senate. So they are now in the capital budget and awaiting the signature of the governor. So I just, the purpose of putting this on the agenda was to say one of our discussion points had been the possibility of engaging the services of a capital project manager, whether contractually or as a staff hire. I know the city of College Park recently constructed a significant municipal building, and they, their initial step was hiring a project manager that was a company that was going to sort of lead them through the process to work with the architects, engineers, and ultimately help in the development of the plans for that building. So just, you know, the goal here was to, if you all are interested in taking a similar path, obviously, we're likely to have half a million dollars each for for upgrades that have been pretty specifically identified for the Bostwick House, mostly repairs and some visioning about the long-term adaptive use. The town had also committed in the course of putting forth those grant applications to some of its own funding, and we'll talk about that more at the regular meeting with the presentation of the FY23 budget. But it would be, you know, our recommendation that we consider a project manager for either or both of these, depending on the individual that's identified or the firm that's identified. For Bostwick in particular, we would want somebody who's got experience working with historic properties and navigating through the complexities of the Maryland Historic Trust and the easements that are with that property. And then with the new municipal center, we need to dig into the land use issues, where it goes, the integration of the police department pieces with the administrative pieces and the council meeting space. So that may call for, for a different level of experience. And then finally, there's been some, some federal funding discussed about a trades training center. And so that's yet another capital project that could be integrated into one or more of those other pieces. But again, all of that calls for, calls for some technical support to assist the staff and council in moving those projects forward. So I believe it's on the, on the agenda as well for an update at the regular meeting, but at that time, we'd just be asking for a general sense of the council or a formal vote to move forward with engaging those professional consultants, putting together RFPs and/or piggybacking on the RFPs that were issued by other municipalities such as College Park. So that's all I have on that. But I just want to, again, I want to thank Senator Augustine, Delegate Fennell, Delegate Ivy, and all the rest of the folks who worked, helped, helped navigate this through. Tony Perez has been advising the town, and everybody really came together under the leadership of the council in moving that forward, and we're extremely pleased with the outcome so far, pending the governor's signature. And I don't want to get too far ahead of myself because it remains unsigned as of today. But I did just check a few minutes ago. Thank you.
Thank you for that background, Mr. McGory. I want to open it up to the staff. Did you have anything to add? And then take questions from the council. Okay, any questions? I see Councilmember Brown.
Yes, that's what, that's what I was about to say, is this pending the governor's signature. Do we know how long that could take?
I believe there's a statutory requirement that requires the governor to either sign or not sign or veto within a, within a specified period of time. I have not had any indication that the governor intends to veto the capital budget. It was approved, I don't remember the vote count, but on both sides, it was very significant bipartisan support, so I would anticipate that's forthcoming. But I don't know the answer to that question. But it is.
That's definitely the hope because they, things go on there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Brown, a very good one indeed. There's no progress without the governor's signature. Councilmember Rowat?
Thank you, Mayor James. So I, I am very interested in understanding the preference of a contract versus a FTE, maybe a time-limited FTE, for the purposes of, to my knowledge, I don't think any of the council members or our staff have that expertise of have, of being able to, you know, have, I don't think we have the expertise on the staff. So we would, I would highly recommend that we lean more towards a contract with a specific agency that has the ability to guide us and lead us through the historic and for new construct capital projects. But to you, Mr. McGory, or any other staff that have worked in municipal, have municipal experience, I think everyone does, all of our staff. But is there, is there a preference, a contract versus a FTE as we approach budget season?
Yeah, I'll state my preference. I would say certainly for the major, if you're starting with a non-existent structure or a rebuild, an entire rebuild, I absolutely believe a contract with a firm that has experience because though they will customarily designate an individual to be the lead project manager and be the point of contact for the town, they will have other project management resources they can go to, whether planners, site designers, project engineers, building engineers, architects, et cetera. So that would be, you know, finding a firm with that level of depth would be my goal for the second two projects. With regard to Bostwick, I think there is the possibility, and we do have an extensive bucket of experience working with the Amen Trust and with several specific architecture firms and construction firms and engineering firms and archaeological consultants. So I think there, a part-time consulting individual could help us just sort of keep those projects moving forward. But again, leaning on the other more in-depth firm might be possible. So I would certainly leave the door open at this point. All we're looking for is budgetary guidance on, yes, should we move forward with the concept of getting in that additional expertise and getting somebody under contract. But with the budget, you know, we'd absolutely be back to the council with a more solid recommendation when we've got names of firms and/or individuals for each of these specific projects, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Did that answer the question, Councilmember Rowat?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. And similarly, as you were talking, Mr. McGory, I had jotted down a few things, one being I really think the historic preservation piece is a niche area, and you can't assume just hiring a contractor would presumptuously be able to offer those skills. So I do feel like that would require a separate professional who understands how to work through those permits, as you spoke to previously, and not just on the permitting side, but even understanding down to the materials and things that would be involved in the preservation of the home. So I think that's a very, very different skill set than the more general type of capital project manager, if you will. So I would definitely ask the council to think through that if we're going to go down this road. And then secondly, you spoke to it already, but I jotted down the bandwidth issue. Bringing on one person, it could be great, a temporary FTE from the standpoint of they're here, we know what they're doing, assigning work for moving things forward, but the downside is they only know what they know. And so by having a firm, as you mentioned, now we've deepened our bench. Because oftentimes, working with consultants, now you're tapping into the additional resources that they offer. So I definitely appreciate you bringing that forward, and do think it would also keep us out of having a longer-term situation where we have to let a FTE go versus engaging a firm for a specified amount of money for a specified amount of time. So it sounds like we're all thinking about moving in the same direction. So good to know that it is also on the council agenda for further discussion and a vote if the council wants to move forward. I'm tracking our time, and so it is time to jump to the next item. Let's see, Mr. McGory might be troubleshooting for Councilmember McBride. So I think he got through the meat of his presentation. So want to move forward? Okay, thumbs up to the next item, which is the town code project update.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try and share my screen here if that's possible. And I just tried texting the, the agenda link to Councilmember McBride with the phone number in case she's able to call in, so she is.
So I'll jump while you're sharing your screen and try to help her troubleshoot and get on. I'm here, I'm just going to turn off my camera.
Okay. Okay, can you see? Can you see that on the screen?
Can you zoom in? Can you zoom in a little bit?
I will, and just.
Make it a little bigger?
Yep, I will try that. So I just want to, want to give you the full page. And if you can see my mouse moving around here, this is just an example, and the reason I wanted to start with an easy example of the kinds of questions that are asked in that 96-page document. As I have mentioned previously, about 15 or so pages are sort of technical descriptions of the framing issues that go into this kind of evaluation. And again, our goal is to get a relatively clean copy of the existing town charter and code up on the internet and then use that as the source of moving forward. So I just called this up, and I will zoom in on it, but this is an excerpt from section 202 of the town charter. It talks about the qualifications of the mayor. There is similar language in the section with regard to council members, qualifications for council members. But general code provided this and highlighted this "nolo contendere." And the proper word that should be used is "nolo contendere," which has an extra "e" in between the "d" and the "r" over here. So this is a fairly simple fix, and there's radio buttons. The options are revised to read and make the correction to add that "e." And that's one option. Another option is do not revise or defer a decision until code publication. So again, the goal of putting this up on the screen now is just to say, you know, there's a missing "e" in this word. General Code, doing their due diligence, pointed out to the town and said, "We recommend that you delete this errant word and add the word "of," or "is convicted of," or "pleads guilty," or "nolo contendere." And that's the correction. And so it's a very, very simple correction here, adding the word "of" and adding the "e" to "contendere" to make it "contendere." So that's one issue, and, and I, again, I simply wanted to point that out to say, I hope with the council's review of this, while it may seem a bit overwhelming, staff had sent a request that if you all have specific pages you want to talk about in some detail, we can certainly tackle those individual pages. But the, you know, the, the process should go fairly quickly, and if you're able to review it and just validate the staff recommendations, here's the second example I wanted to call out during the brief time we have allotted for this. Again, this is from the Charter about powers, section 104. And there is a comma, and general code believes it should use the word "and" so that it says, "The mayor and council should have the power to pass all such ordinances and resolutions or take other actions not contrary to the Constitution of the United States," et cetera, et cetera. So really substituting a comma for an "and," and our recommendation is revised as suggested. So just recapping the process, my hope is the council members will review this document, call out any specific page numbers for discussion. The staff would then revisit those, either with the individual council members to see if we can vet those questions. May need guidance from the attorney or other staff. And then, once we've got all those talking points identified, schedule a work session to go through these items and prepare it for an ultimate vote of the council. So we're hoping to do this at a high altitude and not get into the weeds on policy debates over every specific issue, which, if we find things that we want to go back and debate, should that be changed and should the council, which has the authority to change its policies and procedures and the code and charter? If the council wants to do that, the recommendation would be put a pin in those items, and after you've done this first evaluation and had it up on the, on the web, that you then circle back to those specific policy items that you've identified and dig into those in more depth. So that concludes my comments on that specific piece of the code update.
Thank you for that overview, Mr. McGory. Are there any questions from the council? Okay, so I have a question. So seeing that it is about 80 pages, I was talking with Councilmember Rowat a few days ago, and one of the recommendations that she suggested was perhaps if we divide it up and we each take X number of pages, or a couple of us team up on specific sections, for example, so at least that way we're making sure that we're reviewing every single section and providing the needed input. If that's a recommendation that you all would be comfortable with, then let me know by either speaking up now, and that way we can follow up on email and just say, "Councilmember Blunt, can you take you know, 1 through 20, you and say Councilmember Bride, and then me and Rowat, Councilmember Rowat, take X pages, and Councilmember Brown gets a certain assignment?" So at least we're doing our part. I don't want to come together to meet, and for various reasons, we haven't even reviewed the information. I want us to do our homework first and have an opportunity to talk about it. So when we get to the, the opportunity to have this work session, it's more fruitful for everyone. So sound like a plan? Okay. All right, Mr. McGory, so I'll connect with you tomorrow. Just to give you a reminder to help divvy up the assignment so we can go ahead and get started, and it seems fairly easy to just input your recommendations for this section, so we should be able to roll right through this. And of course, if we have questions, we'll let the staff know so we can get clarification again before we come to our work session. But thank you for that update. The next item in moving through the agenda is the fiscal year 2022 merit increases. Mr. McGory, turning it over to you.
Thank you. This is really just an announcement for the purposes of preparing you for the budget discussion and presentation that's to come and the work sessions that are to come. And as you're aware, the council, at the beginning of COVID, had deferred implementing merit increases and got to those during the budget process last year. Similarly, last year, you deferred the implementation or the execution of merit increases. Staff has, in the meantime, made its decision about merit increases for eligible employees. And so those will be applied for the eligible employees retroactively. Those employees needed to have been employed here as of July 1st, 2021, still employed here on April 11th, 2022, and, and have worked, I believe it's not, not been on leave more than 320 hours during that time. So basically, full-time employees who have continued employment during the course of this fiscal year will be eligible for the merit bonuses or merit pay. So when that merit pay is applied, you're going to see the budget implication of that in the fourth quarter, because we are already in the fourth quarter, and that'll be applied retroactively. So I just wanted to point that out as normally, we're hoping to get in the habit of all those things will be done effective at the start of the fiscal year. That habit was broken in 2020 and again in 2021. But during 2022, in preparation for the fiscal '23 budget, we intend to be in front of that. So that's all I needed to say on that item. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you for that update, Mr. McGory. And just want to call out, we didn't break it for the sake of breaking it, but we had an unprecedented pandemic, so this was not normal protocol. But I do want to commend the council for at least saying, "Let's put it in the budget," and then assess down the road where we are before just applying it more broadly, just to be fiduciary and responsible for the budget as we should be. So again, thank you for that update, Mr. McGory. The next item is with respect to the June council meeting. We talked about it briefly last month, that for those attending MML, we should talk about what the date needs to be for the June council work session as well as the town council meeting. And we threw around a couple of the Mondays in June. But I do recall, staff was asking if the council would be amenable to moving the meeting up to the first Monday of the month, so that if we need to do something additional, an additional meeting on the budget before it passes by June 30th, we have time versus putting the council meeting at the end and potentially having to do some additional meetings and back and forth. So are there any concerns from the council? We'll vote on it in the council meeting at 7:00 PM, but just wanted to open it up for discussion to ask if there were concerns.
Mayor James?
Yes, Councilmember Rowat. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I can't find my hand button. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I am very in favor of it being June 6th and not the 20th, because the 20th is a special day. That's like the day I was born. So.
I was gonna say, I hear that's somebody's birthday, so.
If we cannot meet on my birthday, I will be fine.
Now, I take offense. You, you were with us on Valentine's Day.
No, thank you.
And only kidding. You gave us Valentine's Day. Your family shared. You should get your birthday. I totally agree. So again, I believe we have this on, yes, unfinished business, so we'll do the formal vote in the next meeting, but thank you for that update as well, Councilmember Rowat. The next item, or I'm sorry, Mr. McGory, did you have anything to add there under MML and the potential moving date? Okay. Next up, Legit, we received the Board of Trustees ballot. And you may see a familiar face and name on there. When you go to the website, you can click on the candidates and see their bios and learn a bit more about their background. And one of the individuals is Mayor Tracy Ferrish Gant from the town of Edmiston. So again, I believe this is, let me double-check. This is also on the 7 o'clock meeting for a vote, but I just want to open it up for discussion to get the an understanding of the will of the council in terms of who to nominate for the trustee. There is, in addition to Mayor Gant, sorry, Ted Zaleski from Carroll County, Eric Jackson from Charles County, and Emily Keller from Hagerstown. So any feedback, Mr. McGory?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, you know, there's an opportunity, there are four seats and four candidates identified per the bylaws of Legit. And if, if the council perchance wanted, you know, had something adverse to say about any of the candidates, you would obviously want to do that in a closed session to protect the privacy of the individuals. But otherwise, staff would assume you'll just move forward and authorize us at the regular meeting to check all four boxes, yea, and, and send it off, as, as was done previously. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. I was thrown off where it said each member has one vote, and it went on from there. I was thinking, wait, I thought we did all four. So last night, in looking at it, I thought I must just be tired. But okay, thank you for clarifying that. So all four candidates are on the ballot. But again, just want to understand what the will of the council is, so the proper motion can be made in the 7 o'clock meeting. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Brown, you look like you're on the verge of saying something. I'm messing with you. No pressure.
No, I, I had thought you, you did, you did sense that correctly. I had thought swimming around in my head. So who are the four people again?
Sure. So Mayor Gant from Edmiston, Ted Zaleski from Carroll County, Eric Jackson from Charles County, and Emily Keller from Hagerstown. And reviewing their bios, all of them seem well-qualified. I will note, Mr. Zaleski and Mr. Jackson in particular have very strong financial and insurance references in their background, which I think is a strong benefit to their experience that they can bring to the Legit Board, just given the responsibilities. Councilmember Rowat, I apologize, your hand, the tone of it is kind of spilling into the background. That is my fault. Go ahead, please.
I was going to echo what you were saying and reading their bios. It seems like a lot of the candidates to sit on the board have some extensive experience, and I do think each of them have a diverse set of skills that they can bring to the table. So I'm in favor of all of them favorably supporting them moving forward.
Great, thank you. And thank you for your patience with me not seeing your hand back there. All right, so again, it's on the 7:00 PM meeting, so we'll circle back to that. The next item on the agenda is the Mental Health Awareness Day. Is that you, Councilmember Rowat?
Yes, that is me. Thank you, Mayor James. Last year, we had our first annual My Piece Mental Health Awareness Day, which I believe was a success. We had a number of youth and adults to be enrolled in services on the site. During last year's budget period, we would, we did include this as a budgeted item that the mayor and council, part of our budget that we would like to initiate. And so given that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, I would like to propose that we have this session again, well, this at this event again, that the mayor and council work together to provide onsite enrollment and services. There are community organizations that have been willing to come and partner, whether it's to work a table, to provide services, to facilitate activities so that everyone understands the importance of mental health, the importance of mental wellness. What I would like to see is we also have a mental health first aid training that we can offer to the community. So I am in search of an organization to facilitate that training, and I was made aware that there is an organization that is local in the port towns that has funding through the federal government to have training, trainings. So I would like to. So I would like to propose both of these activities for mental health awareness. And if any member of the council would like to work on the committee alongside with me. Last year, it was a great success and we actually saved one person's life last year with being able to enroll them into substance use treatment services.
Thank you for that overview, Councilmember Routh. So I want to open it up for questions. And while folks are raising their hand, if they're going to, just wanted to make sure that I understand for the training, is that for our staff or is that more so a community training for residents?
That's an excellent question, Mayor James. So through the federal government, the Substance Abuse Mental Health Administration that's under the HHS cluster, there are grants that are for community-based organizations to be able to have a train-the-trainer model so that this grant particularly allows this organization to train a person in mental health first aid. And then they, for sustainability purposes, would then be charged on carrying out that. So I think for us, just to be able to start small, maybe we should just have a training for community and/or staff members to be trained in mental health awareness, right? So just, I mean, I'm sorry, mental health first aid. So that's understanding mental health first aid. What does mental health look like? What does substance abuse look like? And that could be our first step. And then maybe next year or another time, we can take up on like having possibly a trainer on our staff. Maybe in our training department, we have trainers in our police department, and maybe they can be a community trainer. But I think for right now, we should just start small and we should open this up to maybe, let's say, 10 slots, five for the community and five for staff and work with this organization to get just individuals trained.
Great. Thank you. That's where I was going. I was trying to understand, is it more so for staff and first responders versus community? And it sounds like it's a bit of both. So understand this is up for discussion on the next meeting as well. Just double check for under new business, the Mental Health Awareness Day. I do think if we do this again this year, we also need to specify what the budget is for this as we do for other events, just to make sure that it's a reasonable amount to provide resources. And then where possible, partner with the community resources, whether it's Prince George's County or SAMSA. Met someone recently from that organization. And I think I know someone else who lives in Bladensburg who knows about that organization. But any, any events that we typically do, we really try to leverage those partnerships to get those experts to come in and volunteer their talks, their time to help our residents. So definitely recommend doing that as well. Councilmember Brown, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mayor James. Yes, I mean, and that's kind of piggybacking on what you're saying. As a matter of fact, you know, first of all, let me say that mental wellness is very, 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 very important. And especially, I think we see a lot of things happening right now. We're still in the pandemic, but two years into the pandemic. So I think that that is very important. And that, but also there are some, let's look at some of the resources from out, from the county level. Yeah, from our county councils because a lot of resources and a lot of things they do. And we can also maybe, you know, look at partnering with them on certain dates, you know, during that month. So I think it's, I think, I think it's good. I think, you know, looking at the budget, you know, because there are a lot of services that are offered that if it was a budget line, I don't know, you know, we may be able to satisfy that with a partnership or something. So but yeah, I mean, I would just definitely like to see a little bit more around it. And I think it's great for our residents and staff.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Brown.
And then we'll talk a little bit more about the training and the type of what does that training on mental health first aid? You know, kind of what that, what does that look like?
Well, Mayor James, may I respond?
Yes, Councilmember Routh, please go ahead.
Yeah, so the mental health first aid training is just like you have a first aid and CPR training. It is an actual training that a person, anybody, a first responder, a person just walking around can hold and have. And this is a evidence-based practice that is considered like you're an expert at mental health. If you have this particular training, I'm speaking with Chief Collington two years ago. There are officers that do have this mental health first aid training that are on our force. And so this training is open to both first responders and it's open to community members. And just like how you can carry around your CPR card, it just allows you to understand the signs and symptoms of mental health, the importance of mental wellness, and then to take it a step forward, being able to develop a resource manual. So if you do encounter someone that is having a mental health crisis, you can be able to provide them some resources. And so the purpose of this is the more you have individuals that are trained, living in the community, working in the community, the better off people are to be able to save their life. And so I just want to be able to bring this training to our community to say there are both community members and there are first responders that have this training.
Right, right, right. Especially if you have an organization, you know, who has
It's right in the Port Towns. It was when I saw it, I was like, oh, my gosh, this is like five minutes down the road. So yeah, definitely. And last year, we did partner with the county. County, they brought resources in. They, the Department of Social Services, they came, they had a table, they enrolled people into services like, it's not called Obamacare, but Obamacare or the American Rescue Plan, to enroll people so that they can be able to access mental health services. So they were able to get insurance for the uninsured for a low or no cost so that they can be able to enroll into services and they were able to provide insurance like that same day. So we had individuals from Maryland Health Connection on site. We had Department of Social Services to be able to ease the burden. So we did that last year. But we also provided expert speakers that were able to talk to the community about different things. So we had maternal health. We had a speaker on maternal health. What is mental wellness? Because you have to understand, mental wellness, that means you're taking, you're taking care of yourself while you're there. So we had a budget last year and we did leverage partnerships. And so I'm looking to expand upon that, making it a little bit smaller, more intimate. And, and yes, the ACA Affordable Care Act or laypeople know Obamacare. So, so I yield back.
We know it's the Affordable Care Act, right?
Yes, thank you both for the great questions, Councilmember Brown, and for the detailed explanations, Councilmember Routh. So we look forward to addressing that in the next meeting. The next item on the agenda is the Port Towns Transportation Service. So is this you, Councilmember Blunt?
Bob can take the lead on it because I do support, he called, I talked to him earlier, and I do support getting a bus, but he can speak more on it. If
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that, Councilmember. I'm sorry, now Councilmember McGory. Mr. McGory. My mind went back like 15 years.
Sounds vaguely familiar. Yeah, I don't know. A little resonance there. Thank you, Councilmember Blunt, also for the handoff and the consultation by phone on this topic. So there's a couple issues operating here. One is, we had received the invoice, which was included in the council packets for the first two quarters of the year. That was July 1st, 21 to December 31st, 21. And you'll see that the total cost of operating the service is all carefully documented, as in prior invoices. But the total bill to Bladensburg is $28,033.76. The budget for the current fiscal year for this activity was $25,000. And so you will recall that, you know, in the early days of my employment, when the budget was being discussed last year in June, this was a talking point and has been talked about since then. The per-unit cost of ridership was significantly elevated due to the pandemic. And that's because ridership fell off. People didn't want to be in an enclosed space with each other. And so there were significant constraints. And at various points, the costs per rider had gone up significantly from two-digit costs to now three-digit costs. So the long and short of it is, that's one piece is just a courtesy heads up. This does appear, Port Towns Transportation does appear in the administration budget. So you will, are receiving your courtesy heads up that the budget will be exceeded for that particular line item, although we have some cost savings in other areas, so we're able to adapt to that. But coincident with that, one of the significant costs has been the maintenance costs of this older bus that they're still limping along. And the town of University Park has offered to sell their old 2015 bus, what to them is old, but would be a significant upgrade for us and would enable Port Towns to go from a 2003 bus that has an inoperable handicapped lift due to rust and significant maintenance and service costs and reliability issues and be able to replace that with a 2015 bus from University Park that has been a single-owner bus and quite well-maintained. So the recommendation from Comer Manor, Dan Baden, who works as the treasurer for both Comer Manor and University Park, has kind of been the pivot on this. And my informal conversations, so that the number they did settle on now is $20,250 or sorry, $22,500. The issue of how we allocate the costs, we are down to two participating municipalities in the Port Towns Transportation Service. That's us and Comer Manor. And, you know, you could argue we're a 50-50 split of the capital costs of that. Doesn't necessarily seem reasonable since 80% of the ridership is coming from Bladensburg. And again, that's based on population. So I think it's a reasonable question for the council to determine a couple of options. One, does it want to buy, does it believe investing in this bus is a good thing? Yes or no? Two, if investing in the bus is a good thing, how, what portion of the cost of the bus is allocable to the town of Bladensburg? And how do we go about determining that? And then three, if Bladensburg is paying more than half the cost of the bus, would it make sense and should it make sense for the town to be the owner of record of the bus? And then there's operational and insurance issues that come with that. And my goal in raising all these issues is not to overcomplicate the application of this program, which has been functioning for many years, but only to call out, there's an opportunity here with a major capital upgrade and a needed influx of cash, which I believe is the case. I think the town should capitalize on the opportunity to purchase a new bus. But the questions about the operations, to me, would call out for potentially a subcommittee consisting of representatives from the town of Bladensburg and from the town of Comer Manor, sitting down and trying to pick through some of these operational issues and potentially exploring Bladensburg owning one bus. They will continue to have two buses. They have two drivers currently. And there's a lead bus and a backup bus. And so the older 2003 that I described is currently the backup bus. If we acquire the new bus, that would become the lead bus. The current lead bus would now be the backup bus and the 2003 would be sold for whatever can be acquired for it. So I think that's everything I have to offer on that. I do have ridership has been provided to the town. And I think my inclination is to share that with the council, but take the names of the individual riders out, but give you an idea of the geography of that and sort of there are repeat individuals who use it frequently every month. And but ridership is still fairly low. So just so you're aware of these operating parameters. So with that, I'll stop and await questions from the council. Thank you.
Yes, I think we'll have lots of questions. Councilmember Blunt, did you want to add anything to that before I move on to questions?
Yeah, and I do want to say, I really want the council to understand that having a bus is needed for Bladensburg. Yes, Emerson House is the one who really used the bus, but we can benefit for that bus and it can pay for itself if we change the way we use the bus. And again, that we all come together and we'll sit down and talk about how it will be used. But I'm hoping that everybody really agree that we really need a bus. We really need a bus for Bladensburg. And I think a lot of people don't know about the bus. That's why it's, I mean, it's low ridership. But once we put it out there, there is a bus and we can offer trips, but the bus would pay for itself once ran the way it need to be ran. But again, meeting with Comer Manor and with us, we can make the decisions then. Because I honestly don't know, but I know that the bus is needed, how it will be operated.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Blunt. Appreciate that input. Councilmember Brown, I see your hand.
Thank you for that, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Blunt and Mr. McGory. You know, first, I mean, I'd say that there are, I see the pros and cons. And one of the things, when you really look at that type of an investment of a 2015 vehicle, insurance, operational, I think, I think if we, as another option to look at, utilize one of the services that we have in town, and they have different sized buses. And as a matter of fact, I know at one of the events that we had, Mayor, can't remember which one it was, but they had the black bus with the wheelchair lift that was operational. And I'm thinking if we, if we, if we look at a relationship with one of those busing companies and then some of them have different sized buses. So number one, it won't restrict us to a bus size. We may, we may have a small group. We may need a bus for 10 people. We may need a bus for 40 people. And having that type of relationship, I think, would be able to facilitate that. Then it takes all of, takes all of that off of us because most of the times, I mean, the bus is just going to sit anyway. It's going to, it's going to, it's going to sit more than it's on the road because it's not, I don't think that it's going to be used every day. But even if so, if we have a relationship with a bus company, and as I said, they have these different vehicles, they are sharing, they have to take care of the insurance, you know, the operational. They are responsible for all of that. We're just, we're in collaboration and we'll work out something where, you know, hopefully they can structure, you know, some good fees or whatever for providing that service. But I don't think that we, the town, we own vehicles right now and the vehicles are just sitting. So, you know, so, so I think, I think a smarter solution is that we, if we look at a company like this and they have different sized vehicles so that we're not stuck. You know, we get a 15, 20-passenger bus and we want, and they're 25 people. Now, we're, you know, we don't, we can't even accommodate that. So I think it's, I think, I think it's, it would be good to look at that option as well. And it's not
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Blunt.
Yeah, that may be true for a large scale. We're talking about a bus that only charged $1. And again, if we, if we choose how we use the bus differently, I don't think using the black bus because I, that's expensive. And these residents use this bus every day. It don't sit. So let's just get that. It don't sit. They use this bus every day, every day. And getting a company to to come in and take them somewhere for $10 or whatever it's going to cost the town, maybe $200 a day, $300 a day, it's still going to wind up being the same thing. And again, having our own bus, we're able to control how it's ran. Again, I know it's a business side, paying somebody insurance, but I'm thinking about the residents being able to, and affordable, use a bus that we own ourselves here at Bladensburg. So you have to look at the big picture. And again, I would advocate for these seniors to keep this bus anywhere I can. If I gotta have them coming down in their wheelchairs, walkers to keep a bus, affordable bus for these residents because
Okay, but let me, let me make sure that
And let me just insert one thing, Councilmember Brown, because we are at time. We do still have it on the next agenda. So I want you to complete your thought, but just
Okay, but you have to clarify one thing is that definitely always in support of our residents in totality as inclusive of the senior citizens and everyone. I'm saying let's look at a solution and maybe we need to really look at some numbers, but look at a solution and look at more than, look at more than one option. So that's So that's.
I definitely understand the point. And just in my fifteen seconds, because I know we're over, just want to say absolutely, I support the seniors, but I can't in good conscience justify a hundred and forty dollars and seventeen cents per person for these rides. While the seniors only pay a dollar, when you break this down, we've got to be thoughtful about what's sustainable. And just giving you an example, so for a four to six hour period, you can pay six hundred dollars for one of those big buses. That's significantly less expensive without all the overhead. So just hoping when we get into the next meeting, we can have further conversation and brainstorm about how we can achieve the ultimate goal together. Because we all want to help the seniors. We just don't want to be throwing excessive money out. And frankly, a, a vehicle that's a twenty-fifteen is going to be in that same situation as that two thousand three bus in a couple of years. So I just, I know we want to do something, but we just want to make sure we're doing the best, is all I think we're saying. So thank you all for sharing those comments. Um, the next item on the agenda, uh, let me see here. Oh, that brings us to the end. We were very efficient. Um, want to ask for a motion to adjourn the work session.
Mayor James.
Did I miss your hand?
Well, yeah.
I'm so sorry. I didn't even see it.
No, I put it down, but I, but we are, can we revisit this since we got a little bit of time? Just a little bit.
Um, sure. So um, let's give it a couple of minutes, because I know you didn't get an opportunity to speak. Go ahead, Councilmember Route.
I just, I, I agree with everything that was stated. I do, I, I am still in favor of the um, Lyft or Uber. Um, looking into that. And I know we never gave that a chance to look into a specific code that we can use like per resident of, because if you look at it, there's not, there's not twenty people ride their wer- the ridership. If you look at the ridership, there wasn't like a twenty person that was all going somewhere at the same time for the last year. Well, that may be because of COVID. But right now, COVID isn't going anywhere. COVID is still here. So to have a busload of people, that's still putting our most vulnerable individuals at risk. And so I do think that the seniors need something. I do agree that we need to look into other methods. I'm not sure if a bus is the way to go, but I would like us to really investigate other methods of buses versus individual cars or Uber Lyft. Um, and they, they can create, they can, they can, the Uber or the Lyft option, town of Bladensburg can be given a code. And when you're specific, when you use a specific code, it will tailor so that it's only, it's like a ten dollar maximum that you can use per month with this code when you enroll in the program. It's used by MCOs, it's used by government. So there is a way that we can be able to work with them. I just would like to recommend that if we are exploring, we give that option a chance as well, because that'll lessen our carbon footprint and we'll be able to be very much, you know, um, healthier, a healthier Bladensburg with reducing our carbon footprint. I yield back.
Thank you for uh, those comments, Councilmember Route. And then um, before we go, Councilmember McBride, did you have any thoughts that you wanted to share? Just want to make sure you have an opportunity to speak.
Um, not right now. I mean, I'm just basically listening, because I'm weighing the options with that, with the senior and the residents of Bladensburg as a whole. So I just want to think through that when we go into our next portion of meeting.
Okay, sounds great. Again, thank you all for uh, the dispirited debate in the interest of doing what's best for our residents. Truly appreciate it. And with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn tonight's work session.
Also move.
Moved by Councilmember Blunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Route. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the motion. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of I. Hi. Any nays? The eyes have it. Thank you so much. We'll see you right back at seven. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.